I have fifteen. Call is being ordered, please stand to pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We shall have a roll call, please, Stacy.
Curieles?
Yes.
Colby?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Ellison?
Yes.
Mayor Walters?
Yes. Okay, we shall begin tonight once again with Mayor Walters' quote for the day. And I thought in the spirit of the season and in the interest of teamwork, I selected this quote from, it's from Mother Teresa. "I can do things you cannot, you can do things I cannot, together we can do great things." May we all embrace her spirit of teamwork as we look forward to 2024. Okay, we have a pretty full plate tonight, so we have, we'll just move right into that. Welcome everybody that's present. We have a couple of items we have to add to our agenda before I ask for a motion to approve. So, under the consent agenda, we have to add an item G, application for exempt permit for the Minnesota Deer Hunters. And then we'll have an item F, which is a resolution authorizing advertising for bids for the redesign of the transit office and bus garage addition project. Welcome. So, get those two items and I'll, now at this point, I'll ask for entertain a mission, or a motion, rather, to approve the agenda with adding those items.
I'll move to approve the agenda, but adding those two items under the consent agenda and ordinances and resolutions.
I will second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the agenda with the items added. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. We have the citizens' comments portion of the meeting, and at this time, I would like to invite Mr. Jeff Kuhn up. He's gonna speak to us a little bit about the East Seventh Street and Bus Garage.
Alright, thank you, council. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, East Seventh Street, we've talked about this project in the past with the council. It's probably, probably a year ago. We are still looking at a fairly complex project. Just the portion up on East Seventh, we were looking at a total project cost of around four and a half million dollars, of which the sewer and water at that point still doesn't really function because we don't have the lift station portion in there that would be required to kind of pump that from the low end up to a portion, into a portion of your system. If we were to add that lift station, we're probably looking at adding another million dollars. We're looking at about five and a half million dollars. You had asked me at a past meeting about our options for funding. A portion of the street is already, basically a hundred percent of the street is already being paid for through federal aid dollars and state aid dollars. The federal aid dollars are right around 1.6 million dollars. The state aid would cover the remaining, I think it's three and a half million total. So, that, that difference is gonna be picked up by state aid. Currently, you have about five to six hundred thousand in state aid in, in your account. You gain approximately two to 250,000 a year. Two more years, you'll have roughly a million dollars in your account at the time of the project. This federal money needs to be used by year 2025. So, that'd be the year that, that street really needs to move forward. If in fact, you're gonna use it on East Seventh, we can talk about other options there in a little bit. At the time of the project, so you're still a little short on state aid, you can advance up to five years of your normal allotment into that account to come up for that difference. So, we'll roughly have somewhere between three and a half to 3.8 million dollars for, between federal and state aid dollars, okay, to cover that portion of the street. The utility part, that's a different, like, little bit of an animal there. As far as assessments on that first phase, we figured there's probably twenty some assessments. So, that still leaves a large chunk that the city would have to come up for, bond for that. Through trying to get some grants, the extension of water into a, an extension project for PFA funding, it would not be eligible for grant dollars, okay? You could probably get some low interest loan money, but you would not get grant dollars through PFA due to the rules that are put in place there. If in fact, you had a health and safety concern on the water side, it then may in fact qualify for grants, but I don't believe that's the case in this particular area. That's a little bit of new information than maybe what I presented the, the last time that I talked to you. We talked to Department of Health, and they do not fund for extensions into unsuared areas or new areas. They would do replacements of existing and stuff like that, but they do not do an extension. The sewer would be eligible potentially. Again, the, the amount of eligibility all kind of comes back to the affordability for the city or your median household income is, where your current debt load is. There'd be a pretty exhaustive calculation that we'd have to go through right now. I would not be able to tell you what percent that would be, okay? As part of the process for going after funding, we would talk probably at the soonest somewhere in the neighborhood of two years out before you would actually see any of that money. And that's a guess at this point. It's, it's a possibility, we've seen that happen, but again, it's gonna be a higher need project that's gonna garner that money sooner than somebody else on that list type of thing. So, depending on how your project would rate or rank against other projects, kind of would be the, you know, the soonest availability of that money then. You're just gonna kind of fall in line with some of those other projects. So, as far as, there's some steps that you would have to go through. We talked about getting on the PPL, we talked about getting on the IUP, we talked about doing a facility plan. Although those are required, those would come in order. There's a deadline for getting on the IUP. That's the first Friday in June. Generally, each year, the PPL is the first Friday in May. And having a facility plan, that would be, we would have to leapfrog some of these other ones because they would want that to be done in March of '24, okay? Generally, the first, first Friday in March. Okay? So, that's kind of some information on, on that. I'm open discussing questions. I know that you guys recently gotten some survey information back from residents. Oh, did you want me to talk a little bit about the other option at all, or where should we go from here?
We can. So, it can be used on different state aid roads, but I have rest here too because there is Pacific.
We've talked about in the past that we as staff, as an engineer, feel like East Seventh Street is the right location for the monies, the federal dollars. We did talk about as, as another option that you could spend it potentially on Pacific. We feel that one is, is not a highest priority right now for those federal dollars. These federal dollars do not happen every year for a community such as Morris or in, in our district. Generally, I would say on average, once every seven years. So, passing up to use that on one of your larger stretches of roadway right now on East Seventh Street would probably be a little bit of a mistake. Coming, that many dollars coming out of state aid for that is, is gonna really set the state aid account back, so.
And we'd have other things with Pacific too. We'd have underground pipes that would have to be replaced, so there's extra costs with that. There's, it's a thicker road, and it's a road that staff can maintain for the next five years.
Dude, it's a, it's a full-depth pavement road section right now, so it's a little different than most of your other streets in town. So, you could probably get by with a little bit less of a, a mill and overlay would probably be able to address a lot of the ratability that's happening if you have that issue. Right now, it's not as in dire shape as probably the, the East Seventh Street project area.
Jeff, just to clarify, when you were saying that, okay, so the whole project would be about 5.5 million, and then with state aid and federal dollars, three, about 3.8 million would be covered? So, basically, we'd be looking at two million of financing for that.
I think that's about right, and that would, that would get you?
That would get streets, water, sewer, lift stations, all the way that we talked about down.
Through the East Seventh Street area, yep. We wouldn't be branching off of East Seventh Street and serving some of those side roads that come off there. It's basically the ones right, right now, abutting Seventh Street.
Where was, where would we be starting from?
We would start up just about Line Drive area, just across from the baseball field-ish. And we'd go all the way down, down to that.
So, when you say the, the side streets, like those side streets with the, the?
The cul-de-sacs that are coming on, yep.
That would serve those or not at all?
It would serve those, but it's not hooking them up yet at this point. We haven't extended those utilities, that's another portion of this cost. We had talked at one point, a total project, when we looked at doing all the areas adjacent plus some future growth, around 10 million dollars.
And that included Hillside too?
Yes.
I like the 5.5 million.
You like the smaller one.
Can we just roll that into like?
So, that's, that's bringing sewer and water to anything adjacent to the road? So, any homes that were like right up on the road?
So, we would, we would take care of the road corridor and get it stubbed out for future stuff off of there, but we, we're not planning on putting a utility and digging up that side road per se to serve those homes that come off of those. Anything that abuts highway or East Seventh Street has a service there, we would, we could hook them up. But some of those probably are even gonna be stubbed off those side streets. So, some of those homes may not in fact be hooked up immediately.
When you're saying East Seventh Street, though, we're going all the way out to the bypass?
Correct.
How about the trailer court?
That is not included.
That's not in the city?
It is one of the options that-
That we're going by, and that's one of our big goals was that looking at the population and the density per area is one of the biggest ones why it was never included when we did it. Just if we're going right by it and they have all of those that are there, if they were interested.
That is one that, like you say, you're going kind of close by it. You'll be running with these, if you were to do all phases, you'd be running right by it. So, to, to bring it in wouldn't be a, a big ask. It's a question of what are you gonna charge them versus them not being in the city and all that? You've got to go through all of that and figure out that information before you would really wanna.
Would, would, as we go past the ballparks, there's two additions there. If those additions were to be serviced, would it require a lift station? Or does the lift station only really come into play when you start getting down the hill?
The lift station will be down at the bottom, so it, it, it will be servicing all of these areas. So, those would be easy, just main extensions like you would do in any other part of town. It'd be a-
I guess my, my point would be, let's say, let's say that you don't do the lift station, that you go down Seventh Street to the highway, and you do abutting, but you can do those two. Call this, anything up here that you could do that would not need the lift? We still need that, you can't get it, you can't get the flow back even on those?
Yeah.
There's too much fall there too?
Yeah, so, we talked about trying to extend the gravity line further to the east on East Seventh, just to try to pick up some of that. And you run out of grade before you be able to do it.
Now, that was my, that was definitely my question, is it, if you could?
You're gonna have maybe a foot or two of cover at most is what we've always kind of figured and anticipated, so. So, it's just not doable, that line will freeze and it's not-
Unless you put some heat tape on it, you'll get gear on it.
What do you think?
What do you think Jay?
I think Jay, Jay, Jay wouldn't even sign that plan.
Oh, shoot.
So.
Can you speak to us a little bit about how that advance works? You talked about an advance, where does that money come from?
So, it comes out of the state coffers. They do have monies that they can draw from to advance out to state aid communities on their state aid allocations. It's part of the rules of which, if in fact, this, the community looks like they need to do an advance to line up from some funding to move that project forward, they can do that. It's specifically written in there for smaller communities. Also written in there that the, the larger ones can also take advantage of it, but they cannot take up to five times their allotment. They're more of a, a cap than the five years. Because the community of Morris is such that we, we get a couple hundred thousand a year, we know that that can do a very large project, and so, they allow to go up to five years to, to get a decent sized project in and make it workable, so.
So, is that like a loan then?
It is a no-interest loan, yes. So, as you then get your future allocations each year going forward, that money that you normally would get would just stay.
Is that in addition, it's separate then from LGA?
Yes.
Okay.
We've always needed to have an assessor come in to assess the project and get a value back to our resident. I mean, how are we gonna sit with that if we have sixty percent just out of our return surveys that are pretty much not interested right now? And to get the appraised value for us to assess a property, where do we sit at with that?
It's a tough conversation that you're gonna have, and I don't know what kind of value an assessor would come back for this type of a project, very unique. It's just not an easy conversation to have. Yes, you've done that in the past to try to garner some sort of reassurance that your assessments are in line with avoiding contested assessments. That's something that you don't wanna have a whole bunch of those because then the city's on the hook for all of that, and that's just not gonna be doable for the city moving forward. So, you kind of look to hedge to make sure that you're protected that way. This particular project is gonna be very hard to do that again on. Can they do it? I, I would, I guess we'd have to ask them. What that value is, I have no idea. I've looked at it from the standpoint of these homes right now currently have individual septic systems and individual wells. Replacing those in kind on their given properties, what would a likely cost of that be? And then can we equate that to an assessment? You could to a certain extent. It's probably gonna be higher than what your five-year running average is currently set for what you currently assess on normal ground. I think it'd be pretty easy for the attorney to make a case that this would be, you know, a, a unique circumstance that you could potentially go above that for this project area. What that amount is, I don't have that answer. We'd have to go through some analysis, and maybe have some, you know, give and take with that assessor and finding what that number is.
How many services you have ballpark figure for us if we're just doing the East Seventh and not doing the big branch?
Yeah, East Seventh, I've given that number, I believe it's around 21.
Okay. And that, now, doing that, that requires the lift station at the end?
Yes.
Okay.
Otherwise, they're just sitting there with a pipe.
I was gonna say, otherwise, yeah.
Which you could do, but then you got no assessments.
Yep, I hear ya.
When do we have to take action on the 1.6?
So, that is locked in right now in 2025.
So, we don't have to take any action on that part of it, okay? That's just there, alright. Okay.
No, but we'll more than likely have to go out for bids on whether we decide here probably January, February, I would guess.
Early '24, yep.
So, the, the federal project, we will be getting started on all of the environmental accumulation that's needed this winter. We'll roll into design then of the road improvements later this winter and then into summer and get those plans approved and bid those for 2025 construction. Okay?
So, you would need to know by when on, so you can start designing?
For the sewer and water?
Yeah, on, because they'll have to make a decision then on it.
You really are almost past that point. To, to get funding for it, we, I say that takes two years. You're, now you're into '25 already before you even get any money. If you're just gonna go bond for it and not worry about the grant funding and, and low interest loan and get your own bond, then we can, then you've got a little bit of time. We can move that forward in it. You do the, just the pipe option and not hook them up, but we really need to start doing some other planning because you're gonna really start running out of managing money on your own coffers at that point.
So, just thinking about that, if you did the option without stubbing into the two develop, well, there's actually three cul-de-sacs there, just trying to envision how that process would work 'cause say, how many X amount of years after we've already went down and, you know, did the whole project, and then they come back and say, well, we're all starting to fail here, can we stub in? Then how do we, and how does that work?
We'll have to determine what those assessments are, would be, 'cause their cost at that point is gonna be, you know, different to hook in to something that the city kind of paid for. And maybe that's something that you decide the city, overall taxpayers kind of pay for a portion of this. I don't know, that's something that you guys gotta kind of wrestle with. This is a very hard situation. There's a reason that it hadn't been done before, it's because it's costly. Jay's known about this for many years, we've known about it and studied it for many years. You currently, they have sewer and water. It's not city sewer and water, it's their own private sewer and water. We don't know of any health threat issues to the, the wells. Some taste concerns and stuff like that, that's kind of a given, kind of common occurrence. So. Okay?
Alright.
Any other questions?
Thanks for your update.
Oh, thank you. Thank you a lot.
Okay, and then as far as the, as the bus garage, should I wait then?
You can muscle hit it right now, huh?
Well, you, yeah, you can talk about it and then-
Okay.
Bus garage?
So, basically, we're, we're gonna be looking for a resolution to be passed here later on to get authorization to go advertise for bids. We've got revised plans put together that staff is reviewing right now to build a new addition onto the existing facility out at the shop area, and then remodel the first bay into an office area. So, I think prior attempts, we've tried to have a separate office be added onto the side and three or four bus stalls be added. Now, we've narrowed it down to the simplest, still meeting the grant agreement that you guys have applied for. So, MinDOT there has kind of signed off on the intent, still meeting the grant agreement. We're hoping to get it closer to what the grant amount was. Okay? That's really what I have there, so you'll be looking at that resolution coming up here, I think, on your agenda.
Alright, thank you.
Okay?
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, moving on, we have no public hearings tonight. We shall move on to reading and approval of the regular reading minutes from November 28.
I'll move approval of the regular minutes from 11:28.
I will second.
Motion and a second to approve the regular meeting minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. And we have the condensed version of the minutes from November 28 as well.
I'll move approval of the condensed version of the minutes from 11:28. I'll second.
Motion and a second to approve the condensed version of the 11:28, 23 minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. We will move on to the consent agenda, which consists of the audit of city bills, final pay estimate for the AWOS at the airport, the gambling report, 10:25 tree board minutes, the transit report, the tourism board minutes, and the added application for exempt permit for the Minnesota Deer Hunters Association.
I'll move approval of the consent agenda.
I will second.
Alright, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion on any of the items on the consent agenda? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. We have no petitions, requests, or communications. We shall move on to ordinances and resolutions. First up is a resolution approving a building inspector contract within Spectron Incorporated. Becca, would you like to speak to that a little bit?
Yeah, so, um, last year, Mike Jacobson has said that he is looking to retire. He thought he would be retiring this August, and he's extended his time so he could find somebody. So, he was looking at possibly April. So, I've been working to try and figure out how and who we'd get for a building inspector. Talked to someone from the cities who might have been willing to do it, and then also had a conversation with Spectron. In order, they currently do Glen Woods, they'd be willing to do Morris if Benson and Appleton also agreed to kind of come in with them too so they could justify their cost for coming out this way. So, as, as far as I know, I haven't talked to Appleton today. I believe their council met yesterday. Benson, they had sent, their council got the information last week. He sounded very favorable that they would move this direction. So, I think it's a good opportunity for us to have a company. That way, if someone does retire, we're not scrambling to find somebody to accompany and hopefully they'll continue to, to service this area. So, a little bit different in how, how they do things and how we would pay for things. So, currently, we pay Mike for his time and mileage to come here twice a week. They would go based off of permit fees, so they'd get 75% of the permit fee. Yeah, so the permit fee, you'll see a resolution to with that on changing the fees, 'cause their fees are a little bit different than ours are. Any questions?
So, in doing that different pay scale, do we have a rough idea based on last year's permit fees? How much this would cost then, like 75 or not?
So, it, we really, I'm trying to think of when we looked at it. I don't think we'd be losing a whole lot of funds, 'cause I can't remember exactly what we pay Mike. But from, you know, his two, well, his, his was two days a week, no matter if we had permits or not. So, this is based on the permits. The only difference is we did a lot of the in-house maintenance ones, which they'll get all of that. But I don't think there was a huge difference in revenue that we wouldn't be getting based on how much came in and how much we had paid Mike. I can't give you an actual answer on that, which I can't, you know, we can wait, I can get some numbers.
Oh, no, I'm fine, I was just curious more of this, like- Oh, no, I'm fine. I was just curious more of this, like this is.
Yeah.
If I can chime in, like, no years alike. It totally depends on what building permits are applied for and who are building. So it's hard to compare from year to year.
Yep.
Um, and then with COVID, the last two out of the four years have kinda skewed it anyway, so. But no years alike, but we did run numbers to see and it, it was very comparable with our best estimate of what might come in for permits.
The one thing I noticed on the contract is that it's made up to the city of Benson.
Oh, was it? Should I change some of that? Cause I did notice that there was a couple other ones too.
Yeah, there's a couple of spots here where it's.
Okay.
Addressed to Benson, so.
I just was looking at the scope of services that InSpectron, uh, offers. You know, that just sounds like a transformer thing, doesn't it? InSpectron. Sorry, I just had to say that. But I was looking at some of the, uh, you know, they offer monthly, quarterly, and annual reports to the city council. I think that would something, be something new for us. Um, and then, uh, in addition to that, they offer zoning assistance. Or, you know, I suppose they would help us with reviewing our zoning ordinances and such. I don't think we've had that service in the past from Mike, have we? Or maybe he's done it behind the scenes or?
Yeah, I don't know. I haven't worked with him very, very long, so I can't say.
I know it's more money, but it looks like, you know, they do offer a pretty wide range of services. Any more questions, discussions for Becca on that?
And this is set, so whereas, you know, starting January one twenty-four, automatic renewal dependent upon services and whatnot, right? What, I mean, you talked with Benson, didn't have a chance to talk to Appleton. What if, what if one of the two says, sorry, we're out?
I think if Benson and Morris both say yes, I don't think it would necessarily matter. I shouldn't say that, cause they're smaller, but. I, I do think that us two would need to, they would need at least two out of the three. So, um, but we're all in the same boat. You either utilize them or you go, you say you don't wanna have the building code anymore and you just give out zoning permits. Because you can't have the building code without having a building official.
Our current wants out. I mean, he's.
He's retiring.
He's gave us an idea and he's retiring in April and we've got an option. I think it just makes sense for us to move forward and try this and see how it works. And if we're unhappy after a year, we can find another option. But if it's something that a neighbor is using it, if they're in Glenwood right now, and if we're gonna have another community Benson and us, I think it's worth pursuing and see if we can make it work.
What's their, what's their total staff? Do we, do we have that number? I, I asked more out of curiosity because to Jeff's point, if they're doing Glenwood and Morris and Benson and Appleton and all these locations, right? You have to have a healthy staff to do that.
I know before he gave me the contract, he said he had to make sure he had enough staff to do it. So I don't know exactly how many they have, but I know that they either hired other people or they knew that, that they were able to do it before even, cause I talked to him probably in August or September and he didn't give me his contract until probably November. So.
I, I guess I see this as the most viable, um, answer to this, so. I'll move on the reser, resolution approving a building inspector contract with InSpectron Inc.
I'll second.
Okay. We have a, a motion and a second, uh, to approve the resolution, or to approve the resolution approving a building inspector contract with InSpectron Incorporated. We will have roll call vote on that, please.
House Member Crails?
Yes.
Salvi?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Bellixon?
Yes.
Mayor Waller?
Yes. Okay, next up is a, we have a resolution before us approving an earned sick and safe time policy. Once again, Becca, I think you may wanna speak to that.
So, um, this last legislative session, um, they had passed, uh, approval where we have to implement a safe and sick time leave for all employees. Um, so we have worked with, um, worked with Susan, who's an employment attorney, to, um, put together a earned sick and safe leave time policy. So the way for our current full-time thirty-hour week employees, um, they already get, more than what the state says we have to. So this just, um, shares that we'll cross-designate their first forty-eight hours of sick and vacation, um, to utilize for their E S S T. And then for our part-time employees working less than thirty hours a week, the seasonal temporary and paid-on-call employees, they will start accumulating one hour for every thirty hours worked. Up to a max of forty-eight. So then it goes into how they can use it, um, what it can be used for. Yeah, so, something we will implement beginning of the year.
What happens to it if it's for a person that's part-time and then they build some up and then they, they don't come back after a seasonal?
So they do, they do not get paid out.
It, it doesn't get paid out.
They believe it was in here, yep.
Okay.
Um, I believe the law says that if they come back within a certain amount of time, they get whatever they accumulated back. But I'd have to, I'd have to double check and see if it's in here.
Oh, just, I didn't know if it, if that was something that was paid out or not, so.
No, it's not a paid, paid out benefit.
I know you talked about this a little bit in your, in your city manager newsletter, right? But the, the comment, I'd, I'd call it in the last section where this is a fluid document, right? That good luck to the human resources trying to sort through all this, right?
Yes, yeah.
That's gonna be one of the biggest, that's gonna be one of the biggest headaches is trying to determine some of this and what's legal and what's not, right? So congratulations to you as well, having to sort through some of that.
As, as, right, as, yeah, she said as administrative rulings get handed down, um, as people start working through this, this may need to change.
Yeah.
So, we'll see.
With that in mind, are we gonna have to pass repeated resolutions updating this, or what's the thought process?
Uh, I would think since it's a policy, you would have to do a resolution every time.
I think you would, yes.
If you're adopting a policy change, I would say so. If it's, if it's on the margins, if it's just interpreting the policy, maybe not. I mean, obviously you're gonna have to follow whatever state law is.
Which there's enough gray area in this one specifically.
Any more discussion, questions for Becca?
I'll make a motion approving the resolution on the, uh, earned sick and safe time policy.
I will second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve an earned sick leave and safe time policy. Roll call vote on that, please, Stacy.
House Member Solvi?
Yes.
Crails?
Yes.
Bellixon?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Mayor Waller?
Yes. Okay, next up is, uh, we have a resolution approving an airport farm land lease with M T M Farms for twenty twenty-four. Like to speak to that also, Becca, or?
I sure can, um.
Unless anybody, we've had this before us, so. I guess it's, unless there's something really different than what we.
There isn't anything really different. I don't see that I added the actual lease. I just added a resolution.
I think we, I think we're all at least somewhat familiar with it, so I don't know if you guys have some discussion.
Yeah, the, um, the only thing that changed is it went up five dollars from last year. Um, in there, just to note, it says a hundred and thirty-seven acres. That's what's, um, technically farmable. Um, but there are some areas that, um, Mike said he can't get into. So it does have a clause in there that, um, him and I will work out the actual number of acres that's farmed and what he'll pay on. Um, and then from last year, it does take out that he can put corn in, just because it gets too high next to the airport. Those are the big changes.
Is there a property around there that he doesn't farm that somebody else does, or do you know?
On the bottom portion, um, of the runway, he said somebody else, and I don't have the name in front of me, so it, not quite certain who it was. Um, but he said somebody else farms that. So it's our land, but it's farmed by somebody else. And we don't have an agreement with them. I did talk to Jeff and he said that might have been something that was negotiated in a different contract when you got more land, so I'm gonna look into that. Um, I haven't done that yet.
When we extended the runway, uh, it was from a different property. I believe it was a fight and murder.
That's what it was, yep.
And they had requested that they wanted to continue to farm the land around that extension, but I can't remember exactly how that went. But when I talked to Becca, I said we probably need to go back and look at that agreement and see what it was. But I would think that in reality, to be fair, that they should, should be paying rent on that land around the end of the runway, comparable to what we're charging for everything that's along the main runway. But we need to go back and see what that agreement was when we did the extension on the airport runway.
Kind of been part of the terms.
Yeah, I'm, I'm quite sure it was that they wanted to retain, to farm around, because basically they gotta farm around it in the field where they're at for, for, for them to sell the land to us or for us to get the agreement for the runway. It's pretty much what we had to do.
Yeah, and then someone else does, oh, FALFA in a small area too. So, just some little things to clean up, but.
I will move on the resolution approving an airport farm land lease agreement with M T M Farms for twenty twenty-four.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the resolution, an airport farm land lease with M T M Farms for twenty twenty-four. We'll have roll call vote on that resolution, please.
House Member Miller?
Yes.
Bellixon?
Yes.
Crails?
Yes.
Salvi?
Yes.
Mayor Waller?
Yes. Okay, the next item here, item D, is gonna be for discussion only. We will not take action on this resolution at this meeting. It will be, uh, moved ahead till next month, or next meeting, rather. But, so at this time, we can just enter into a discussion on that resolution, increasing the sewer and water utility rates for twenty twenty-four. Knowing that we're not taking action tonight, but I'll just open it up for discussion.
Well, I can kinda talk a little bit, so.
Sure.
Your, um, sewer base, your sewer fee, your sewer flat, flat rate, um, all of that is just going up about a three percent. Well, not going up about, it's going up three percent is what, um, what we did some calculations for. The water is a different, um, different little monster. Um, the last few years, the chemicals costs, um, other, other things that we're needing are going up in cost. So, um, what we budgeted for this year for chemicals, um, were quite a bit over already. Um, expecting more of an increase next year, um, along with needing new meter heads and some meters. Um, so costs are going up and our rates have only gone up about three percent. So we've kinda lost some money the last few years in our water fund. Um, so we did an internal rate study with Row Water, um, just to kinda give us a what, what we could do, how we can, um, fix the problem, um, work through it. Uh, they did talk about our base rate, um, is pretty low for, for a city getting built every two months. Um, and then, um, some other options we could look at, cause we, you know, we have some big commercial users. So, commercial users can put, you know, get back or charge out, I should say, um, their expense to their customers or, um, have it as an expense for their, for their taxes. So, uh, kinda looking at two different options. Um, and we can run different scenarios if you'd like, um, but in order to break even and then have some extra funding so we can start building up a little bit to do some of these water, um, projects, uh, we're looking at raising the base rate, um, twenty dollars either option. Um, raising the base rate helps, but it's not where you see your most significant increases. Um, so looking at, so right now we charge four ninety-five, um, per hundred cubic feet of water. Um, option one goes up sixty-two percent for everybody. It doesn't, um, doesn't switch it into residential, commercial. It's, um, just increasing everybody's, uh, utility rate for water, um, up sixty-two percent to eight oh four per hundred cubic. Which you'll see on the bottom, if you're, you know, looking at an average bill of probably a thousand cubic feet, um, per two months. Uh, you're looking at an increase, um, in your bill of thirty-eight fifty-eight for those two months. Or nineteen twenty-nine per month, um, added to your bill. Uh, option two is a little different, so residents would get, um, less of a hit. Um, they'd go up about thirty percent and then the commercial users would have a bigger bump of seventy. Um, I didn't do a calculation for how that would affect businesses, but I, you do see it on the bottom, the residents. Um, so their bill, um, would go up to one seventy-nine forty-five, which is a difference in two months of twenty-two fifty-eight. So a little less of a hit for, for the residents. A bigger hit for the commercial. Um, but like I stated before, there are bigger users, um, and can.
Are all businesses considered commercial then?
Yes.
Either option is gonna generate the same revenue, basically.
Um, option two does a little less, um, than option one. But I didn't want to raise commercial any higher than that.
Are we experiencing more expense based on, you know, maybe more labor towards the two? You know, we had, we had to hire a whole nother person for that, or was that banked into the first round of expenses?
In the last handful of years, chemical costs alone have risen up over three hundred percent. So just like that line alone, we're over a hundred and fifty thousand per year already.
Right.
Uh, we're probably gonna hit two hundred thousand by the end of this year. And we've had to dip and charge reserves the last two years.
Right.
Because of just increasing costs and.
And so basically, really, it is just basically the cost of the products that we're using to maintain and soften the water.
To create soluble water.
Yeah, no, I totally understand. I just, uh, I just don't usually hear that your products are going up three hundred percent in a year or two. Really putting it to it. Uh, I don't wanna point out another sore spot, but you know, Alberta really isn't getting, getting beat up as bad as we are.
That's based on their contracts.
I know. How long does that contract last and how? Do we ever look at that and see how long that's for? And what we can do about that?
I can definitely check and give you information to the next meeting.
Maybe you could, uh, ask them to join our REIT corps and.
I know at some points they've paid extra, like, bigger amounts, like, at some.
Yeah, look like when we looked back, every once in a while they would pay a lump sum amount like eighty grand or if any improvement's done or.
Maybe do some of that?
So, I can, I can grab that contract for the next meeting. And get some information on that.
Well, I, I guess in my opinion of the two rates, um, I, I really don't think that we should get out of commercials. You know, they're, they're going to pay more than the resident just by the volume that they're using. You know, I mean, they're gonna use more than residents and so their volume, so i- i- in, yeah, I, I don't, I don't necessarily agree with that. Yeah, the resident's gonna pay a little bit more, uh, on that, but they're gonna be paying it with, in the same percentage of respect as everybody else. I, I, I don't, I, you know, I, even as a resident, I'd say, oh man, I don't, I don't like that, cause our businesses are really what we need in town more than anything too, so. But if we need to increase the rate, we have, we have costs that are going up. It isn't, uh, is it that we're trying to fluff the account or, or, or? But if we need to increase the rate, we have, we have costs that are going up. It isn't uh, is it that we're trying to fluff the account or 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 do anything? You know, that's that's real cost, so uh we need to start passing it on. And just based on our tour last week of the facility, I think that everybody in Morris, in my opinion, if we would somehow be able to do it. Should tour that plant and and actually see uh what they do with your water and and how very nice we have it from where we were. And how we're gonna have it going forward. That's a spectacular plant and and we get really good water from there. It's it's amazing to see, and the people that run it do an awesome job, so.
And we've talked.
Oh, go ahead. I was just gonna say, the other part that we need to in the near future is um meter head, meter, the meters we put in, I think it was in twenty eleven, the entire town was replaced. And they have about a fifteen year life, so we're getting really close to needing, that's gonna be a big expense that's gonna cost a lot of money for the city too. So we need we need to kind of try and prepare for that, as well as, you know, if there's a West Side project or if you're looking at the East Seven, that's not even pick. This increase is not taken into effect of the bond payment that we need for that project as well, cause that would be across citywide. So there's regardless of what project you pick, we're gonna have increased costs there too. So we're just trying to be proactive and try and absorb some of these increased costs as well.
We've talked about just a security issue with having our water treatment plan open to the general public, but we discussed on possibly doing a video. Having somebody come in and do a walkthrough like we did, and then having that available online to to just see. To show people what actually is happening and what they're paying for, so I think that would make sense for us to try to line something like that up.
Yeah, I I would talk to, I'll talk to the League of Minnesota Cities and see, you know, I know we've talked before, just making sure that we aren't compromising. Um our water plant um to see how we could.
Well, whether you're physically looking at it or you do a virtual tour, I think that safety is still, it still has the potential to be compromised, so that is something, Becca, that we'll need to check.
Right, but yeah, we can definitely look and see how we could.
And I believe Mike Seehawke probably would be a contact for us that we do some work with already on a monthly basis. That works out through the university on recording a lot of the programming.
Any other discussion?
Well, and just to add, yeah, it's tough, it's big increases, but we have to cover our costs. We can't go in the in the red. We need to 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 at least break even or make a little, and it's tough to swallow, but it's it's both of them are pretty good sized increases, but. To distribute it amongst everyone fairly, I think makes more sense instead of trying to hit the businesses harder. And the option one will generate a bit more revenue for us than the option two will. And I guess either of those could be tweaked a bit if we decide something in between or compromise to make it work, but we need to have our our water and sewer systems in the black.
Yeah, once again, this is just a discussion tonight, and we'll be moving that forward to next meeting for action. Any other discussion before we move on? Hearing none, we'll move on to item E, resolution setting fees and charges. This one, we will take action, correct?
Yeah, so this this goes with the building official um s- contract. Um their fees are different than our fees, so um you'll see that it is um. Our fees are crossed out, and the new um inserted line is that the fees are based on the contract with Inspector. Just in case their fees change, we don't always have to change this document.
Oh, I hear ya. I'll move on the resolution setting the fees and charges.
I'll second.
All right, so we have a first and a second uh on approving the resolution setting fees and charges. Is that for twenty twenty four then, just?
That's just our fee schedule.
Just her, yes, okay, all right, we have the first and a second. Uh we'll have roll call vote on that, please.
Councilmember Gallicson?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Salvi?
Yes.
Crails?
Yes.
Merrill.
Yes. All right, now we have the um added resolution, item F, resolution authorizing advertising for bids for redesign of transit and office and bus garage. And we, kinda Jeff spoke to that already, so.
Right.
Is there any other discussion on that?
No, whatever we can try and do to get that value down, right, the first couple of times, it's been not even close. Right, so whatever we can do and still make it serviceable, right, that's the biggest thing is.
Yeah.
Making it serviceable, yeah.
I will move on the resolution authorizing advertising for bids for the redesign of the transit office and bus garage addition project. I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Approving the resolution authorizing for bids for the redesign of the transit and off, transit office and bus garage, we'll have roll call vote on that resolution, please.
Councilmember Crails?
Yes.
Salvi?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Gallicson?
Yes.
Merrill.
Yes. Okay, we shall move on to the city manager's newsletter.
Yeah, um union negotiations with both unions are underway. Um I met with both unions last week. Um a few things that need to be worked out and looked at, um I will be bringing in Susan with Madam Glanter Hansen. Um LLP uh to help with the negotiations, um. Don't know how how it's gonna go, so just having somebody else um as an attorney sitting in on that um with employment experience would be helpful. Um we have had some staff changes, um so there have been a few changes in the staff, so we hired on Patty. Patty will be um coming to council meeting, she's our new office secretary. Um she's been here now a few weeks.
Welcome.
Yeah.
Welcome, Patty.
Yeah, so um with some of the changes that we've had, um we've realized that we need um a little bit more human resource knowledge base. Um so we have moved Maggie into a different role, um that's a human resource and accounting specialist. Um just needing a few things, uh big things that I think that we're lacking, personnel policy. Um when we had um personnel item, um I was asked by the league, well, what what does your personnel policy say? Well, we don't have one. We use the contracts, which are nice, but having having the personnel policy is something we need too. Um some other human resource things uh that I feel we need but don't have, and streamlining some um. Some other human resource items um would just be helpful. And hopefully not get us into any sticky situations. So um so far, she uh she was just let out of the union, let her position drop since since she has this new role. December first, she took over this spot, so she's been working uh with me on the ESST policy. Um to uh working on getting stuff together for um department heads, so they know how um hiring staff is gonna go. We have a couple of positions now, so kind of how that whole process will go with her in this position. Um getting out information to them of uh incident reports, um if there's ever an incident with um an employee or an accident. Um she, we also brought in um Aflac, so it's a employee paid benefit um for anyone over twenty hours a week. So um just something else we can offer to employees that don't doesn't cost the city money, but it's a benefit to them. Um so she was instrumental in bringing them in and and working with them to get that benefit to start next um next month. So um yeah, so that's been, it's been a lot of changes in the office, so all good things. Thinking into our work session in April, so we have one in January on the charter. Um but thinking of our work session in April and thinking about after our tour and knowing that there are a lot of um. Possible areas of improvement in some of these, um and starting to work on budget probably in May, June. To maybe come up in April of different areas we wanna prioritize first. Um so I'll, um by our work session, I'll get what I feel um should be looked at and prioritized, but then we can have that conversation. Together on what what we feel as a group and as a city, we want to focus our um monies first. Just to note, our second meeting, um here in December, we'll move to next Thursday, the twenty first, so it'll be a quick turnaround. Right, that's next Thursday, right?
Yep.
I'm like, really, is it already done? Um yeah, so I I've done quite a bit with the boards and commissions, um not changing how many people are on there, but just kind of getting guidelines set. And then doing some bylaws for each of them, so um and hoping that since I have quite a bit of them done, I can finish them up and bring that to the next meeting. So we can, um even if we don't approve them, we can have some conversation about it. And then we'll also bring the firemen's rates and the final budgets. We'll do the the truth and taxation meeting tonight. Um but at the next meeting, we'll do the final budget and the final numbers. And then um the tourism board met, and uh they're going to have click content come down. Um to be taking photos of the lights on the prairie, open skate downtown, and maybe a few things that are RDC, so they're um. They are looking to come down on Sunday, so um I think we're getting everything lined up for that, so.
If you haven't drove out through the park on Friday, you should do that. It's, I think they should be commended putting that whole thing together in just a short period of time. And I also wanted to give a shout out to our city guys. I was talking to Tina Harris out there the night we were there. He wanted to to make sure that I thank them for their cooperation and their help, cause they were, he said, they're awesome, in his words. They they had questions about, you know, different electrical hookups and things, and the the guys were right there helping them out. So it was, he just wanted to make sure that they got recognized for that. All right, any other discussion on the city manager's newsletter?
Just seeing, we're gonna look at firemen's rates here for the end of the year. Did we get everything straightened out with the firemen's audit to get their state in taken care of?
Yeah, he just brought that in. It's the other day or last week?
Last week, finally, yeah.
Okay. Thank you, I'm just checking that normally in the fall of the year, and I've heard that was a a holdup on them, but just making sure they got that taken care of, thank you.
Yep.
All right, any other comments, questions?
I think the uh just the itemized and and I for April, I think that'd be good, right, just so that we can give some guidance, right? Obviously, a work session can't be a decision-making function, right, but that'll be a good, here's what we we should look into, yeah. Um and just from my knowledge, uh when does, as far as union negotiations, when does that have to be, is there a deadline, when do those have to be signed?
So obviously, you always like to have them done before the end of the year, so you don't have to retro pay.
Yep.
I don't think it'll be done before the end of the year. One union might, I don't know about the other. I mean, you can always be hopeful, um but I don't, I don't know. We'll see. So I'm hoping I did, I'm pretty positive, we'll be looking at it one year and and having to start looking earlier at negotiations for next year. Just to, cause we like them done before the end of the year.
Any other dis- items for discussion? Hearing none, we have, I guess, another business. We have some liquor licenses to approve uh for twenty twenty four. Are we missing any from previous years?
Not Stone's Grill.
Oh, that's the only one, okay.
And then the addition of that little.
Okay. All right, just need a motion to approve those.
I'll make the motion to approve the twenty twenty four liquor licenses.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion, uh motion first and a second to approve the liquor licenses for twenty twenty four is listed. Uh all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side, motion carried. Any informational items that anybody would like to present to the council now? Hearing none, we close this meeting, Becca, and then open the budget meeting?
The truth and taxation hearing, yep.
Yep, so.
I I'd just like to say thanks to everybody in the city and and every, all the building departments that we went and visited the other day that were very. Very nice to us as we were looking through their buildings and and giving us all their information, so I was very happy to hear of so many people that are passionate about their jobs. It's refreshing, so a shout out to all of them, thank you.
Well, it's good to see all of those different facilities and the shapes of them, and yes, where things are with each different department, and I think it needs to be done more often.
Okay. If there is no further discussion, I shall close our regular meeting. Uh you guys wanna just take maybe a five minute break here before we jump into the truth and taxation to use the restroom or whatever?
This stage of work.
Yep.
Oh, so we can't take a break. Okay, let's march right on through then.
Get her done.
So I'll get.
Okay.
I'll get. All right, so this is our truth and taxation period for the twenty twenty four city budget. So we look, we have a levy increase of three point five percent, so our levy is going up to one million seven hundred seventy seven thousand eight dollars. So you have um, kind of spells it out here, your general fund, um which includes the lower leases, going up to one million two thirty two one oh nine. Your library expense sixty thousand oh four, and your debt service of four hundred sixty three thousand five sixty four, and tax abatement of twenty one three thirty one. Uh look at your market values, they've increased twelve point four percent from last year to twenty twenty four. The taxable market value increased eleven point thirty seven percent. So your total taxable market value is three, three hundred and eight million two hundred thirty three thousand five hundred fifty eight. On your tax rate comparison, um went down thirteen point three percent. So essentially, what you could charge versus what you are for your tax capacity has gone down a little bit. So I get into kind of the nitty gritty of things and your budget. Um so some of the things to consider, uh we had a three point five percent levy increase, which was about a sixty thousand dollar increase in our levy. We had the increase in the LGA, which helped to keep that levy increase down. Wage increases are still being negotiated, so your budget um numbers could be different. We have continued capital improvements, uh looking for continued funding for capital L Bay, you have stable liquor store sales. And then a lot of increasing cost of chemicals and water meters needed, and utility projects are increasing your water rates and the expenses in the waterfront. So if you look at your total city budget, um you have an increase of four point four three percent throughout all of the different funds. Your general fund is going up six point six percent, which includes that lower debt service, which is about thirty one thousand. You have your capital improvement fund, and this is what comes from your franchise fees, and then some funds from. Some state aid maintenance monies that are put into there, so that's down a little bit uh from last year. Uh last year, there was a transfer from the general fund to fifty thousand dollars, that's not included in this year. So then you see here, um the different items uh that make up what's gonna happen with that capital improvement. So then you see here, um, the different items, uh, that make up what's gonna happen with that capital improvement fund. Uh, you will wanna note that our mill and Orela project on the self-runage road that was budgeted for this year, um, it got too late and didn't happen. So monies in the general fund can't be, um, accumulated and used into the next year, but with, um, this fund, it can, so that money will be used next year to finish off, um, that project and get that done.
And that one was from Pizza Hut down to Homestead?
Pizza Hut. Yeah.
Was it Pizza Hut that started?
And then a patch on college.
Okay.
Yep. Then you have your capital outlay fund, which, um, decreased. But I have a negative, so it decreased a little bit, um, for for this next year. So if you look, I think we have. But, um, I gave everyone their capital outlay. All right. Um, we have some computers for a couple of different departments. The fire department has, well, twenty-six thousand, um, for different items. Do you have any questions on those? None of those changed on our preliminary budget. So they're all just capital items. The library fund, um, they went down. They decreased about two point four one percent. That's just due to they had more capital items last year than they did this year. Stormwater, um, increased at one point nine three.
Man.
Just due to expenses and then that extra added increase. The lobbying tax fund budget, um, money's in, money's going out to the tourism dollars. We're estimating about seventy-one, five hundred, when we can do that. You look at your debt service. Five different payments totaling four hundred sixty-three thousand five sixty-four. Uh, so the water fund, um, with the projected increases and expenses, looking at a, um, income there, so you would you would have a little money, um, play around with, but you like to have that little buffer, so we can, um, start saving up for water meters and some of the other projects. And your sewer fund, um, looking at a ninety-one thousand four forty-three, um, projected net income, which includes that back hatch for the jetter. Beverage collection, net solid zero. And then you have the liquor store. So the liquor store is looking at a budgeted net income of two hundred seventy-seven thousand four eighty-four. Doing pretty well, I think, um, hard to get close to our budgeted revenues, um, for the end of the year for them. We will be bringing, um, some different options for the liquor store, um, as we go through things, but that is not in the budget for next year. We haven't done anything with that. The garage fund, this is where we have our mechanic in, so net zero income for that one. Things to be thinking about, uh, union contracts are still being negotiated, so that, um, that could skew some budgeted numbers on what we're doing with the banks. Hopefully, in the future, we'll be able to try and settle union contracts before the preliminary budget or close to. You know, the final budget has to be set, um, but that doesn't always happen. So costs are up for a number of items, due to inflation with fuel costs, supplies, repairs, equipment purchases. I do think is if we have turnover, we're gonna find employees for our city to be difficult. We did with union, um, in talking with different things, it might be a good idea for us to look at, or we just, um, just to to make sure we're competitive as we start, you know, if we start seeing turnover, we can make sure we're in a competitive market, um, hard to find employees, as is now. Um, our local government even up for the next year. We're hoping that the legislature, the legislators will continue to have that increase, um, in LGA, and we'll continue to see, um, some of the areas for us in. Any questions? One for Debbie Hatt.
A lot of this, we talked at our bu- talked and discussed at our budget workshop, so it's just kinda nice to see the finished product here, or at least getting closer.
What did what did you put into this budget for the negotiations? Do we have three, two, three, three and a half? What do we have in there for?
And for the preliminary budget, I put in five.
You did?
Chris Allen, yeah. Any other question? With how things are going, um, we'll be keeping, you know, we'll be asking for that three and a half percent levy, and the levy can stay the same with the next, um, the next meeting. Individual line items might be a little different than you saw at the preliminary budget, um, but we're not gonna be going all the way down. Any other questions?
No, it's good.
No, I think so, good. Hearing no other questions, we shall close the truth and taxation portion.